Hey Jeremy, are you there? Anyone, anyone? Hey Jeremy, can I ask you a question? Can you unmute yourself? Passos, what are you doing?
Hi Kevin, how are you?
Good man, how are you?
I'm doing okay. My wife is gonna be on in a few minutes.
Okay.
So I have to join the meeting to see what Beth gonna do. Why are you laughing?
I don't know, just... It's kinda funny. I thought you would be serving right now.
I have to go serve, but I have to put everything up for Beth to be ready. So I think this is a go. I don't need to do anything else, huh?
No, I don't think so. I mean...
Perfect. I talked to you nephew after I finished with the rotary.
Yeah, no problem, man.
Kevin, have you ever met my wife Beth?
Yeah, yeah, we talked a few times. A couple of years ago, I think I met her originally.
Yes, he's on the meeting too. We have another 10 minutes, Kevin, huh?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, I can leave it open.
Yep. Yeah, you could hit the mute button if you want. You could hit the mute button, so...
I need to find out where's the mute button.
On the top, top right of your screen there. There's like a blue, should be like a blue thing.
He's on an iPad.
Over a mouse.
That's a hand.
That's right. There you go. You got it. Now you're muted.
Kevin.
Yes.
We're not, I mean, we don't have to be here at 7:00.
Well, we start the meeting at 7:00. Where are you on the agenda?
We're at preliminary... What is it, Passos?
Side modification.
Okay, um, we, I mean, probably like 10 minutes in.
Oh, okay.
Depends on how quick we go through the order here, but...
Okay, perfect. Thank you.
Okay. Jeremy, you there?
I am at the moment.
Hey, I got a question for you.
Sure.
For my deck. I'm wondering if I need a permit for that, because I'm gonna have an overhead roof. Do I need a permit for that, or no?
Was it on the original plan, or no?
Yeah, the deck is, yeah.
So if the deck is on the original plan, then I don't think you'll need anything separate. But if you're putting a roof over this structure that you didn't have before, then you'd need a permit for that.
Okay, um... Can you just send me the form for that and now fill it out? Or somebody from your office?
If you would, because I will not remember this. Just shoot me an email to that effect.
Okay.
Alright?
Yeah, thanks.
Thanks.
Jeremy? Are you there? Hello, Roland.
Hello, Jim.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, thank you.
Okay.
Yep.
I didn't know if I was muted. I'm muted, but I see the little box up there.
I was muted. I just turned it on. So how's it going?
Okay, fine.
Yeah.
Sorry, Jim, I'm here. I heard you from the other room.
Okay. I just had a question that was... How long do we plan to have these... This type of meeting, you know, Zoom meetings? Is it gonna go to the end of the year?
Um, hard to say. The council, I think, is planning to have an in-person meeting at their next meeting on the 8th. And after that, I think we might be able to go in person with you all, and the public would be via Zoom. But somewhat undetermined, but we may be in person or in some kind of hybrid mode in October if all goes well.
Okay.
And that's a big if and a big maybe.
All right. Good evening. How are you?
Good. How you doing, Ray?
Not too bad. Just seeing if I can get a copy of the agenda printed out on my computer here. Sounds like it. Okay. Looks like it. I wasn't like Phoenix. I hope that was good. Okay, so it looks like we're back in business. Good evening, Kevin. I see you're with us. Jim? Hi, Roy.
How you doing, Ray?
Good evening, Ted, Meg, Angeles.
Hey.
Hello.
Okay, let's see what else we've got going on here. Okay.
Hey Ray, Jake is here, but he's not gonna vote tonight.
I'm sorry, who is?
Jake is here, but he's not gonna vote.
Oh, he's not gonna vote tonight? Okay.
No.
I've got Penny over here too, so...
I just put the computer down. I don't know if anybody saw him.
No, I missed them. Okay, good evening, Tim. I missed you before. And Michael's here. Good, okay.
Good evening, Ray.
Let's see, we've got... One, two, three, four... Five, six, seven. Good. Okay. Well, uh... It's 7 o'clock, so Jeremy, you ready?
I am.
Okay. Good evening, everybody, and welcome to the regularly scheduled meeting of the East Hampton Planning and Zoning Commission. Today is September 2nd, 2020. It's 7 o'clock. We're doing this virtually because of the pandemic situation. So first is, we have a full house, so we are... We do not need to seat any alternates, and I would like to thank all the members of the commission for being here this evening and taking time out to do that, and also members of the public for being here. And hopefully expressing your opinion. I'm looking for an approval of the minutes of the August 19th, 2020 special meeting with any corrections anybody might happen to have.
I'll make that motion.
I have a motion from Jim. Do I have a second? Who was that? Who made the second?
I'll second. Angeles is here.
Okay, great. We have a motion on the floor and seconded. Any comments, discussions? Hearing none. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? Any abstention?
I abstain.
Okay, Meg is abstaining. Okay. Next order of business, communications. Jeremy?
One item in your packet that went out to you, I think, this morning is an application to the Siting Council. I think it's AT&amp;T. They are looking to relocate the Baker Hill cellphone tower. The tower currently is up on the top of Baker Hill behind the Lake Vista condos, and I think they've run into some issues with their landlord there. That's my assumption. And they are looking to move that tower down the hill onto the Anderson property, which is kinda due south from the new Napa, sorta out behind there on the hillside. So we have all of the 500 and something pages of the application available in our office if anybody would like to take a look at it. I did not have Christine scan the entire thing. I did have her do the letter to you from the attorney representing the cellphone company and a map of the proposed location of that tower. So if anybody's interested, you can take a look at it. It's in our office.
Okay, you said you sent that out this morning?
Yeah, that should have, that should have gone up on the website this morning. I'm not quite sure if she emailed it or not, but it should be on the website.
She emailed it.
Okay, great.
I would encourage everybody to take a look at that. What action do we have to take on that? Not this evening, but next month?
Uh, nothing at this time. It should be entirely in the Siting Council's hands. We're gonna double check with the town attorney on that and make sure I'm not missing something, but I think it's entirely with the Siting Council.
And some of these, we've had to do an 824 in the past, so if you could double check that, I would appreciate it.
We'll double check that, because that tower is the one that we have some police department equipment on and some other radio equipment, so we'll double check that.
I know. That's the only reason I was thinking of it.
Yep.
Okay.
Is that other tower gonna come down, or?
That's my understanding, is that this is a relocation. Yep.
Okay. Who owns that property?
The one that it's currently on?
No, the one that's gonna go on.
I think his name is Keith Anderson.
Okay.
It'll all be on the application. Is there anything else, Jeremy?
No, I have no other communications for you.
Okay, liaison reports, inland, wetlands. Nothing that we need to discuss right at the moment. So, um, Roy, anything?
Committee's trying to close out.
We can barely hear you. I was wondering if you could speak up a little bit?
It said the building committee is trying to close out. It looks like we're gonna have to do it via Zoom. We're hoping to do it in person. But that doesn't look like that's gonna happen anytime soon. So maybe by next month we'll have closed out, and I'll have a final report for you.
Thank you. Michael, anything?
Uh, yes. We met at the RPC. We got an update about the regional plan. And then we talked about a region-wide storm recovery resiliency plan. And then we briefly talked about changes to the, potential changes to the state affordable housing legislation. That's what I got.
Okay, Jim?
Yes, I did not attend the ZBA meeting. However, I do have the minutes to the meeting. They had it August 24th, and they had one application, which was granted. And the application was Len Dacus, 21 Emerson Road, to reduce the front yard setback from 25 feet to 11 feet, and reduce the risk from 25 to 10 feet, and reduce the side from 15 to 2.29 to construct a 672 square foot second story over existing structure footprint on a non-conforming wall. As I said, that was granted. That's it.
Thank you. Kevin?
Nothing to report at this time.
Meg?
Nothing, thank you.
Okay, Angeles?
Nothing to report.
Okay, Jim?
I'm all sad. I gave you my.
I'm sorry. I'm Tim.
First thing to report.
Okay. And finally, Ted?
Nothing.
Okay. Public comments. I would first like to thank Jeremy for putting everything together for both our special meeting and for the regional plan of conservation and development for the River Cog. Well, that was terrific having everything together for that. Next, this is the era. This is the time for public comment. If anybody has any comments that they would like to make that do not directly address the public hearings that we're going to have this evening, please tell us your name and first be recognized, and then tell us your name, address, and please make your comments.
I've opened up the microphone, so those there are four members of the public on. Those four, you can unmute yourselves and speak at this time if you choose to.
Anybody? Okay, I will, at the end, if someone can remind me, I will also open it up for the public again just because with these Zoom meetings, I can't actually look and see if anybody wants to say something. So let me make a note on that one. Comments? Okay, moving on then, if you could read the legal notice.
Yep. The East Hampton Planning and Zoning Commission will hold a regular meeting on September 2, 2020 at 7:00 PM via Zoom to consider the following. Application PCC-20-001 Sports on 66 LLC 265 West High Street for special permit to sell alcohol as an accessory use section 8.84B MAP 6 Block 12 Lot 20. Application 20-004 Lisa Sherman 50 Main Street for zone change R1 to POR MAP 02A Block 47 Lot 25. Updates to Section 3.1 Lake Pokipog Protection Zone. Application PCC 20-016 James Marino 106 Main Street for zone change. VC to VHO Section 4.5 MAP 02A Block 48 Lot 3-1. Application PCC 20-015 James Marino 106 Main Street for site plan review for duplex. MAP 02A Block 48 Lot 3-1. Application PCC 20-017 Atlantis Marketing for an amendment to the zoning regulations to amend Section 5.2 and add Section 5.2.6 Gasoline or Motor Fuel Filling Stations in conjunction with a retail store in the commercial zone. Application PCC 20-018 Atlantis Marketing 157 Main Street for zone change from R2 to Commercial for future merge with 1 Colchester Avenue MAP 07A Block 56 Lot 24. Application PCC 20-019 The East Hampton Rotary Club Foundation 45 Daly Road for special permit for commercial recreation MAP 33 Block 87 Lot 3. Application PCC 20-020 Jacqueline Montanez Cologne 46 Skinner Street for special permit to operate a car repair and used car sales business in the industrial zone Section 5.3C MAP 20 Block 48C Lot 17A. And I will add at this time that since the publishing of this legal ad, the application for Sports on 66 has been withdrawn by the applicant and the application by the East Hampton Rotary Club for 45 Daly Road has also been withdrawn by the applicant.
Okay, thank you.
The fifth cup of coffee must have just kicked in.
I'm sorry?
Jeremy's fifth cup of coffee must have just kicked in the way he was reading that.
Hey, I'm trying to keep a quick foray. I don't want to hold him up here.
Application PCC 20-004 Lisa Sherman 50 Main Street for a zone change R1 to POR MAP 02A Block 47 Lot 25. We have closed. Please correct me if I am wrong on this one, Jeremy. We've closed the public hearing on that. We are right now into discussion.
We actually haven't opened the public hearing on that one yet. We have to do so tonight. We've run out of times with the extension, so we do have to open that hearing. It hasn't opened yet. The applicant, the counter, the twin application later on has been closed.
Okay, my, okay, application for an amendment zone change. Regulation 54A POR Zone. Okay. What I would like to do then is, I know it's under old business 7B because 7A is dependent on whether we pass 7B or not. What I would like to do administratively is take the closed application of PCC 20-003 Lisa Sherman for an amendment to the zoning regulation 5.4.8 POR Zone. And then what I would like to do is have that, since that one is closed, open for discussion. I know that we have discussed it in the past. We keep putting it off in the hopes that we could actually meet in person. But unfortunately, we're going to be on this Zoom meeting tonight. And we do have to take care of this particular piece of business this evening. So what I would hope is that people would have some opinion that they would express. And then we're going to have to move this application this evening. And I would like to have a, not just let it slide and then end up being accepted by virtue of the fact we have had no action on it. I would like to actually vote it up or vote it down. So with that, any members of the commission, who are the other ones that can speak this evening on this? Could you please express an opinion one way or the other?
I'll start it off. I've expressed opinions on this before at our meetings. And I I'm opposed of making a change of the thing because it seems like we're eventually gonna be losing the whole R1 zone. And the people would come down and express that they don't want that changed, you know? And they feel that what I got out of the people's feeling was that a lot of these changing the thing is it will change the whole section. And I pointed out before that we started with, like on the west side, we had 16. And we actually had a change to the three of them up there that they could go in the future. And if you take those along with the other other four, that would reduce it from the 16 that originally had to only nine on that side. And on the other side, the two that we said that could have gone before and the two more that have been proposed now would be another four to lose out of 18. So that that side would go from 18 to 14. So that zone is being diminished, and I don't feel that people speaking out against it want to change their zone. I feel strongly that people that live in a particular zone should have a right to what how their zone is is to be stayed the way it is or to be changed. So that's my opinion.
Okay. Anybody else?
Mission? Am I also, you know, feel the same way that you do in a lot of respects, based on what you stated? And with this whole COVID thing, I would think that, you know, maybe we can entertain doing something down the road at another meeting, but not right now. I'm not in favor of any changes at this point.
Anybody else? Okay, I have the, everybody knows my opinion basically, which is, I believe that, given the types of houses, what has been the historical use on Main Street? Which is there is been business on a low-impact scale, whether it be, and Skinner Street also. Doctors, lawyers, that sort of thing. And that's how it has been for a very long time. I'm now going back decades, not just the past few years. So I think that that would be one of the things that would help these very high-taxed, fairly old, high-maintenance requirement houses to maintain that kind of Main Street feel that we have. But that's just my opinion. Anybody else?
I mean, this is the end. I'm kind of on the fence with it, you know, I, just because of the public opposition, I didn't really hear anybody in favor of it. But I totally agree with what Ray stated. And I just, I mean, just in terms of promoting, you know, reasonable business in the town, I I I think that it just presents opportunity for the town, but at the same time, I I, you know, we heard the public speak and they I didn't really hear anybody say that they were in favor of it, at least not anybody that was directly impacted by the Republican, but I'd like to hear what other commission members have to say before we enter the motion.
Hey, Ray, is this an opportunity for the public to speak on this matter?
Fortunately, we've closed the public hearing on this. Now it's just a discussion among ourselves.
All right, thank you.
The what has been brought up is absolutely correct that there are, I don't recall anybody actually that was in favor, other than the applicant and a couple of commission members.
I have a question. Would the home-based application regulation that we're looking at in any way address what's looking to be done at the property?
I would think that it would. Angeles could, I'm sorry, Jeremy could probably answer that in a little bit more detail, if you're prepared to address that, Jeremy?
Yeah, and we can, obviously, we have a lot of work to do on that section, and we don't even have a draft at this point. But I think to answer your question, Angeles, I think the the simple answer is yes. You know, it might be a little bit more complicated than that as we get into crafting those regulations, but I think the simple answer is yes.
Because those regulations aren't going to allow signage, right?
Well, I don't know about that. Right. And so that that was my my understanding with the public at the at the when we did have public in the room, the last time we were able to really converse about this, was that the signage was the main concern. And I'll and I'll remind everybody that right now the POR zone doesn't even allow zoning. I mean, it doesn't even allow signage. And that's an item of discussion later on in the agenda as well. So I think, you know, I think a home-based occupation permit would, or home-based regulation would have to allow some kind of signage, but it certainly would not be to the scale that you're gonna see in the commercial zone or the village center. It would be something small. You know, and in keeping with the residential nature, because again, the idea with those is to keep the residential nature in place, to really hide the business, but allow some flexibility for people to work at home.
So why do, so why do we need the zone change if?
Oh, this, this. The zone change application is kind of what prompted me to, you know, to start taking a look at a home-based occupation regulation and bring that to you all to the attention. You know, do we do we go down the path of promoting the POR zone in areas? Or do we go down the path of looking at a home-based occupation permit that would be usable, you know, townwide in in some fashion or another versus the POR zone, which is, you know, a very fixed limit? So I think, you know, I think I think the idea of a home-based occupation regulation grew out of this application because of the opposition we were seeing.
Okay. Anybody else? I'm gonna call for a motion, Mr. Senate.
I'm gonna make a motion that we deny this zone change.
For the reason?
Basically, for the reason that it will reduce the the intent of that particular zone. It was for the R1, it would reduce the R1 to a degree that I feel like in the future may basically eliminate it.
Okay, we have a motion on the floor on application PCC-20-003 Lisa Sherman for amendment to zoning regulation 5.4.8 POR Zone. I have a motion on the floor from Mr. Senate. Do I have a second?
Roy, a second.
I have a motion on the floor and seconded. Any comments or discussion? Okay, hearing none. All those in favor of the motion to deny, please signify by saying aye. I need to have a head count on this one. So whoever is in favor of this motion to deny.
Roy.
Meg?
Yes, I mean.
Roland, yes.
I'm sorry?
Roland, yes.
Okay, let me just go down the list then. Kevin?
Deny. I would like to deny, so yes.
I'll say deny.
Okay, so it's Kevin is a yes, Jim is a yes, Roy is a yes. Meg is a yes.
Roland is a yes.
Roland is a yes. Okay, who did I miss other than myself? Nobody? Okay.
Angeles. I don't, I didn't hear Angeles.
Sorry, I was on mute. I'm a nay.
Okay, and Ray is a nay, but the motion carries. Okay, with that, application PCC-0, I'm sorry, PCC, application PCC 20-004 Lisa Sherman 50 Main Street for a zone change from R1 to POR MAP 02A Block 47 Lot 25 is thereby rendered mute. So at this point, what do we do, Jeremy, procedure-wise? You're muted, Jeremy.
Sorry, I know. I was trying to get my mouse to the right spot to unmute myself. Statute says that you cannot change a zone without a public hearing. You can't change a zone, so I don't think you even need to open the hearing at this point. That said, we do have a few people on the line. If you want to hear their comments, I don't think it would be inappropriate to do that. Either way, you have to deny the application.
Okay, so with that, I'm going to open up the application. PCC-20-004 Lisa Sherman 50 Main Street for a zone change. R1 to POR MAP 02A Block 47 Lot 25. And I will give the commission members a chance to comment if there are any comments at all. Commission members, anybody? Hearing none. I'm going to now open it up, and commission members can, of course, continue to speak. I'm gonna open it up to the public. So if you could, Jeremy, unmute the public, if anybody has anything to say on this particular application.
The five folks that are on can now unmute themselves if they choose to speak at this time.
Anybody?
Is the applicant here? No?
No.
Okay.
Hello?
Hello, who's this?
This is Larry Low, Walert Avenue.
Yes.
And on the changing from R1 to POR that would really impact the appearance, historical nature of Main Street. And if you open it up there, you're gonna end up opening it across the town, because everybody want professional offices next to them? I don't think so. Thank you.
You're welcome. Anybody else in the public or comments?
All right, so.
What was the name of the app, please?
Yes, Walnut Avenue, yes.
The number?
46.
Or actually.
Thank you.
Okay, with that, I would like to entertain a motion to close the public hearing for application PCC-20-004 Lisa Sherman 50 Main Street for a zone change R1 to POR MAP 02A Block 47 Lot 25. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
I have a motion from Kevin. I have a second.
Second, Roy.
I have a second from Roy. Any comments or discussion on this motion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Any abstentions, any objections? Hearing none, the motion carries. I'd like to have a motion to deny the application PCC 20-004 Lisa Sherman 50 Main Street for a zone change R1 to POR MAP 02A Block 47 Lot 25 due to the fact that we cannot grant this because the zone regulations do not allow it. Do I have a motion to that effect?
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
I have a motion. Kevin, do I have a second?
Second.
I have a second from Jim Senate. So all those in favor of denying this application PCC-20-004, please signify by saying aye. So all those, uh, in favor of denying this application, PCC dash twenty dash oh oh four, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any, any extensions? Hearing none, the motion carries. On to five B, application PCC twenty dash oh one six, James Marino, one oh six Main Street, for vote for a zone change, VC to VHO, four point five lot, I'm sorry, map O two A, block forty-eight, lots three dash one. Uh, Jeremy's just put that up on the, uh, on the screen, and this is the one that is directly across from the library. It's on Main Street, adjacent to Poketipaw Creek as shown on the map. It is not the one that's next to it with all the cars, but I think Jeremy said he is trying to address at the present time. Is the applicant here? You have to unmute yourself, Jim.
Okay.
Okay, if you could briefly identify yourself for the record and also give us a brief overview of what you're trying to do.
Uh, Jim Marino for Main Street, uh, basically trying to put up a two-family home. Um. Think it would fit perfect there.
Okay, but right now, we're hearing a zone change from Village Center to Village.
Yeah.
Opportunity.
Yeah, we're trying to. Go ahead, sorry about that.
No, that's okay. I was just gonna, I was just gonna clarify a little bit. In order to do anything that doesn't have commercial on the ground floor here, uh, the property would need to be changed from Village Center to Village Housing Overlay. Village Center requires commercial use or office use on the first floor with residential above. Village Housing Overlay is an eight-two J Village District Zone that can overlay anywhere in the Village, in the Village Center District, and then some of the residential areas directly adjacent to it as well, uh, that would allow either duplexes, uh, three families or, or multi-family, um, uh, structures. This is proposed to be a duplex, and so the only way to accomplish that is to change the zone from the underlying Village Center to the overlay Village Housing.
Comments or questions on the zone change from the commission?
What's on the property now? Anything?
Nothing.
This is Joel Fuller. Can you hear me?
Yes, go ahead.
Uh, yeah, it's, it's a vacant lot, uh, right now. That was just kind of a leftover piece. Um, it looks like it would go along with the residential that runs up Main Street. Then you have kind of a, a divider, uh, a natural divider line, which is Poketipaw Creek. And the other side is more of the, uh, commercial industrial area. So we think it's a good, a good fit. Um, I mean, it's, they're small duplexes, they're not any bigger than a regular house, and it makes good use of the land, uh, seeing how we have, uh, sewers there. We can keep down the, uh, possibility of any contaminants, uh, to the creek. Um, other than that, that's, uh, we're just trying to put some, uh, put a more affordable housing in that area. And, uh, that's about it.
Jeremy, do you know how many, um, houses are in the VHO on that street?
We don't have any VHO properties currently. As you run, I'll say, up Main Street, meaning up the hill, but it's really south. As you go south on Main Street, it's, it's, uh, Village Center up to the Funeral Home. The Funeral Home is the last, uh, the last property in the Village Center, and then it's just our, it's our two, I think, south of that. Um, and so we don't actually, this is the first time that the Village Housing Overlay has ever been used or applied for.
Okay, and how long has that been in, um, I don't know, in our regulations of VHO?
I'm gonna say about two thousand eight, so twelve years or so.
Okay.
Yeah, you know, the idea is to be able to use it to rehab some of the old mills into housing or, you know, be able to rehab some of the older structures and, uh, around the Village Center. The, the goal is to get more good housing in the Village Center. So this really is, in my opinion, a perfect fit for what the Village Housing Overlay was designed to do. This lot does not serve, it does, it just does not, it's not suited well for any kind of commercial use. You can see there's a good chunk of wetlands on it, which renders a lot of it useless. Um, it's next to a residential piece. It's, it's disconnected from the Village Center, but it certainly is walkable. I think it lends itself well to, uh, you know, a duplex use such as Jim has proposed here.
Are there any impacts to the lake in proximity to the Poketipaw Creek?
No impacts to the lake. This is downstream of the dam quite a ways, uh, and this has been through wetlands and received its wetlands permit last week from inland wetlands that the, uh, Joel has done a, a really good job of designing a plan that minimizes, really pretty much eliminates any impacts to the creek. Gutters are going to a couple of infiltrator units, uh, underground out behind the driveway. The driveway is stone for infiltration. Um, staying out of the wetlands, they're constructing a, uh, stone wall around the wetland line to keep any development or any, uh, tenants out of the wetland area. So I think it's a, it's a pretty good plan.
Okay, thank you. I have no other questions.
And this, this kind of goes in line with our planning and development as far as the Village Center?
It does. One of the things that the POCD is, encourages more, uh, affordable and more housing units in general down in the Village Center.
Is this considered, is this considered a truly affordable housing? You know, there's a, there's a, how is it, uh, you know, uh, cheaper to build and, and rent and all this stuff? But is this going to the so-called category where it's, will be classified as affordable housing?
So you're looking at, at the eight-thirty G definition of affordable housing?
Correct.
We have talked about that, and one unit will be required to, uh, meet the Affordable Housing Statute, because the regulation, the Village Housing Overlay, requires that at least twenty percent of the units constructed be affordable, meeting the eight-thirty G definition. So scale that up, it's only two units, so one of them will be affordable.
Okay.
This is a public hearing. We're going to open up to the public. If any members of the public wish to speak, um, please do so. First, identify yourself, be recognized, and, um, please give us your comments. At the same time, anybody in the, on the commission that has anything to say, they're welcome also to continue to make contributions. Anybody from the public?
I have unmuted the mics. We have four people in the public on. Uh, feel free to unmute yourselves and speak at this time if you choose to.
This is, this is Bob Atherton. Uh, I'm, we live at one nineteen Main Street, uh, just up the hill from the, uh, the proposed, um, change. And based on what we've heard tonight, um, we, we, my wife and I, um, support it. Um, we hope that that will, uh, put some pressure on their next-door neighbors to do something with the, uh, with the, uh, used car lot that is slowly growing, uh, next door.
Thank you.
Uh, Jeremy, I know you and I have had the discussion on this. If you could just very briefly comment on that. I realize it's outside the application, but please go ahead anyway.
Yeah, we're, we're working through the zoning process to get that cleaned up. It's a long process. It's never easy, uh, but the owners of the property have received a couple of letters from me, and they're gonna be due for a third one very soon, and it'll probably get turned over to the attorney shortly after that if I don't get any, uh, any cooperation.
What's the issue? Is it the number of unregistered vehicles on the property? What is it that the violation is?
Yeah, number of unregistered vehicles is, is greater than one. Uh, there's an unpermitted structure there, and we suspect, although we have not been able to confirm, but we suspect that there's some repair, uh, work going on there.
Okay. Okay, anything else from any of the members of the public? Anything else from any members of the commission?
Yes, I have one question. The one, the pot you're talking about, is that, uh, where is that? That's not, because the creek side, is it on the other side of the property? Is it the, whose property is it? Did you see it on the map? I'm talking about the, the cottage.
Oh, it's just to the left. It's to the, if you're looking at this property from the street, it's to the left, so just to the south. It's the next parcel, like a yellow house.
Domenico.
Yeah.
Creone.
Okay, that's, that's one, one to know, okay. And how big is that property that's next to it?
I tell you the truth, I don't, I don't know offhand.
That's a little outside of this particular application, so.
No, I just, I was just wondering what it would look like next to the application that we had, you know?
Uh, Jeremy would have to get back to you on that one. Joel, do you have any idea?
Uh, it, it's a bit bigger. Um, they both end at the back, um, but it's not, not a large lot. It's kind of like if this lot was squared up a little more, that would be the size.
Okay.
So you might be looking at forty, around forty thousand maybe, square feet.
Okay, with that, I would entertain a motion to close the public hearing portion of application PCC dash twenty dash oh one six, James Marino, one oh six Main Street, for a zone change from Village Center to Village Housing Overlay, four point five, map O two A, block forty-eight, lots three dash one.
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, I have a motion on the floor from Kevin. Do I have a second?
Second. Second Roland.
Okay, I have a motion on the floor and seconded. Oh, and also, uh, for the reason that, uh, this would increase the housing stock and is within our regulations, if that's all right with both the, uh, Kevin and also with Roland, yes?
With that amendment, yes.
Okay.
I would also add that it's in line with our POCD.
And it's in line with our POCD. I have a motion on the floor and seconded. Uh, any comments or discussion on this motion? Hearing then, uh, hearing none. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Okay, that's unanimous, so moved. Application five C, application PCC dash twenty dash oh one five, James Marino, one oh six Main Street, for a special permit inside plan review for a duplex in the.
Um, hey Ray, not to interrupt or anything, but that was, that was just to close the public meeting, right?
Oh, okay. I'm losing track. I'm trying to make notes and look at the screen at the same time. Okay, um, that's to close the public hearing, so let's do one for the, to the East Tampa.
I like.
Commission approves the application, PCC dash twenty dash oh one six, James Marino, one oh six Main Street, for a zone change, VC to VHO, four point five, map O two A, block forty-eight, lots three dash one, uh, for the reasons that were previously stated. Um, it's in, it is consistent with the POCD. It increases the housing lot appropriate for that particular, um, that particular location. Do I have a second?
So moved.
Okay, I have a motion on the floor and seconded. Any comments or discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Okay, that sounds unanimous, um, so moved. Application five C, application, uh, by the way, thank you for catching that, Kevin. Uh, application five C, application, um, PCC dash twenty dash oh one five, James Marino, one oh six Main Street, for a special permit inside plan review for a duplex in the Village Housing Overlay, map O two A, block forty-eight, lots three dash one. Uh, if you could, uh, either Joel or, uh, the applicant, um, just give us a brief, uh, rundown of the site plan and where the driveway is, why you chose it, and point out where the inland wetlands are in this, please.
Uh, yes, this is Joel Fuller, uh, from Marlboro. I'm the Lycius Lance of Air and the Project. And, uh, we worked through wetlands on this, uh, and that helped shape, uh, pretty much our general layout. Um, the drive was chosen, uh, to go into the sudly corner of the lot, uh, to keep our grading and, uh, everything out of the wetland area. We didn't, we don't have to fill any wetlands. Uh, we have a pipe in the driveway that is going to take a little water and then, uh, exit right directly to the wetlands, just so that we keep everything as it was before the water will stay the, stay the same pattern. Um, we're going to use, uh, basically, just a little bit of stone at the end of the pipe, and then we're gonna use the, uh, matting so that it will hold and grow quick, and it will just all look like lawn, so it will continue to sheet flow across there. Um, I'm showing, uh, like a low stone wall or barrier just outside the wetlands, um, mostly to keep activity out of the wetland area, because some of it doesn't, is not real pronounced. It's hard to tell if you're in the wetlands or on the upland there in the, in the beginning front section. And then it continues back along the side of the building, and in that case, it would get a little bit higher, but not real high, maybe three feet in some areas. And then that would be holding back, uh, fill, uh, that we're gonna need, uh, at, when we get back to the actual foundation location. Um, but it, it, it won't be a masonry wall, it'll be a natural wall. It should look pretty, pretty good, and the water's just gonna weep through it, um, in the general even pattern. Um, Richard Snarsky flagged the wetlands for me. I, uh, surveyed them. And, uh, basically, I kept the house, uh, to the south as much as possible to allow me to get a drive, uh, along that property line and to the back, um, where I can put in a little bit of parking, and we're gonna have decks in the back and, uh, a couple of garages. So the front will look, it'll look pretty clean. Um, most of the, uh, parking and everything will be in the back. Um, I've included a walk along the driveway, which will run up to the existing concrete driveway along Main Street and come out right there across from the, the library, and you'd be able to use the sidewalk to go, uh, to town or anywhere you want there in the upside residential area. Um, the, uh, again, these are, these are not real large units. Uh, we're just trying to get, uh, some housing in there for young families, um, and possibly some retirees. And, uh, another factor was, uh, the rough water is gonna be recharged into infiltrators, so that's taken out of the, uh, equation of overland, uh, flow of water. Um, I did have to move them a little bit. They were inside the, uh, a little, inside the twenty-five-foot minimum well radius. But, uh, basically, in the same area, I just kind of had to tibbit them and move them down a little and over. Um, so the well will be in the back, um, there's sewers, so there's no conflict with any septic's in the area. Um, and again, you know, it's a, it's a twenty thousand square foot lot, so I think with the wetlands taking a part of it, we've, uh, managed to work this in there. Uh, it's type of the works, and, uh, I think that it makes a pretty good, uh, pretty good plan for that, for that area. Um, other than that, um, I think that, uh, I will be happy to answer any of your specific questions.
Any members of the commission have any questions, comments?
Yeah, I, I have a few, Ray. Um, as far as the square foot per each side, what were you thinking there? Or what do you have it planned for? As far as the house, the, or the duplex?
Okay, the house, each unit is twenty-four by, uh, twenty-eight, so I need my calculator here. I can tell you the exact square footage of one unit. Okay, so twenty-eight times twenty-four. Correct, yeah, so double that for the whole building.
Yep.
Um.
Is that two-bedroom or?
It's still real, huh?
Is that two-bedroom in each?
Yeah, two bedrooms.
Okay.
Yeah, two beds. So basically, it's kind of the size of, uh, a typical ranch, you know, maybe just a hair beggar.
Yeah, up and down, okay. Um,
Yeah.
And, and as far as the land layout, I know that you're in the wetlands area there. As far as, um, seeding the lawn, are you gonna use any fertilizers?
I think that's.
I don't think so. We're not gonna put, no, not really.
And then as far as the pitch of the land? Is that, is it gonna pitch away from the wetlands? Or what's the grade? Is it like ten, less than ten percent or?
Okay, behind, directly like, uh, in the middle of the house, in the back is a high point, um, and one side will pitch towards Pokety Pog, and the other side will pitch, uh, south, and it will be, um, across the driveway, um, only at two percent, and then it will fall off the driveway and go through our pipe. So it won't go on, it won't go on the neighbor's property, because we're gonna build up the driveway there a little bit. We will be taking water from the neighbor's property and taking our own water right at that point and run along the drive and through the pipe.
And then as far as a buffer, you have any buffers with your neighbors?
No, not really. Um, the whole thing is in a wetland buffer, uh, which we got approval for. And we really don't, there's a little piece of wall in the front, but that's about it. Um, we don't really have room for a buffer. Um, it's, when you come across that property line, it is, uh, there's nothing, there's nothing there really until you get up into where the, uh, the cars are and stuff, so it's, it's pretty open. And in the back, it'll be going through the woods.
Good, thank you. Any members of the commission?
Uh, yes, Mr. Chairman. Um, is this an existing driveway or are you building a new one?
This is a new driveway, so we'll have to make, uh, a cut into the existing sidewalk up front and then reconcrete that when we're, we're done. Uh, but there's no, no driveway there now.
Okay. And how far is this house from the neighboring house, give or take?
Uh, I would say, um, I think it shows on the vicinity plan. The neighbor's house is really towards the south more, so we've got a drive there and everything, so I'm, I'm thinking probably, uh, probably around eighty feet or so to the house, ninety feet.
Okay.
Into your property lines, at least twenty feet, I would imagine. Sounds like it's more like forty to your property line, huh?
My property line? What do you mean, uh?
Between the building and the, you, where you're gonna put the house and your property line.
Uh, that is going to be about, it's only about eighteen feet, so.
Oh, okay.
Just enough room to get that drive through there. Again, I'm, I'm trying to balance the concern with the wetlands and the steeper slopes on the other side, too.
Mr. Chairman, I have a question for Jeremy. Um, not too long ago, there was, uh, uh, floodplain, uh, regulations that required structures to be higher than what was before. I don't know if this is a floodplain or not. Does, does this construction, uh, at all fall in line with floodplain?
It does not. It is not in the flood zone, uh, and so they're not, there's no concern there.
Okay, Jeremy, thank you.
This is a public hearing. I would like to open it up to members of the public. If, uh, anybody has any comments or questions, please, uh, be recognized and keep your, our comments short and to the point, if you would. Anybody?
I've unmuted. If you wanna speak, just unmute yourselves and you can speak at this time. I'll also say, Mr. Chairman, that this went before the Design Review Board as required, uh, last week and was approved by the D R B, and I had the facade drawing up there a moment ago, so you could see, uh, what, what it's going to look like. And I'll pull it up again.
Does, does the driveway and, and everything comply with setback requirements?
It does.
Okay.
What are the setback requirements? Is it fifteen feet or?
Uh, the vill- village housing, it's twenty feet in the front, and I think the side yard is ten.
Okay.
What about?
Driveways, driveways are only five feet, though.
Five feet, okay. Okay, uh, with that, anybody else have any comments before I ask for a motion to close the public hearing?
Uh, heating, natural gas on this?
Okay, yep.
Okay, with that, if someone could make a motion to close the public hearing?
I would like to make a motion that we close the public hearing of application P C C twenty dash one fifth, uh, zero one five James Marino, one oh six Main Street for a special permit and site plan review for a duplex in the V H O map zero two A block forty-eight lot three dash one.
Do I have a second?
I'll second it, Roland.
Okay, I have a motion on the floor and second to close the public hearing. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Okay, that sounds unanimous. Uh, so, uh, we're going on now to, uh, the motion, or look for a motion to approve the application P C C dash twenty dash oh one five James Marino, one oh six Main Street for a special permit and site plan review for a duplex in the V H O map oh two A block forty-eight lots three two, three dash one for the following reasons. It's consistent with the P O C D. It increases the housing stock, especially in the Village Center. Uh, we have approvals from D R B and Inland Wetlands and Watercourses Agency with the following conditions. Uh, town staff be notified prior to start of construction. All permits that are in hand prior to the start of construction. Do I have someone who would like to make that motion?
So moved.
I have a motion on the floor from Angeles. Do I have a second?
Second, Kevin.
I have a second from Kevin. Any comments, questions on this motion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? Any abstentions? Hearing none, that passes unanimously. Okay, application P C C twenty dash oh one seven Atlantis Marketing for Amendment to the Zoning Regulations to amend section five point two and add section five point two point C point six gasoline or motor fuel filling stations in conjunction with retail store in the commercial zone. Jeremy?
We have received a request from the applicant, uh, or rather, the attorney representing the applicant that this application and the next application, P C C twenty seventeen and twenty eighteen both be, uh, postponed with the hearing opening at the October seventh meeting.
I would like a motion to continue. Application P C C dash twenty dash oh one seven Atlantis Marketing for Amendment to the Zoning Regulations to amend five point two and add five point two point C point six gasoline or motor fuel filling stations in conjunction with a retail store in the commercial zone at the request of the applicant. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
I have a motion on the floor from Angeles. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion on the floor, seconded by Roland. All those, any comments, discussion on this motion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Okay, that passes unanimously. Application five E, applica- I would like to have a motion to continue.
Ray, question?
Yes, go.
Uh, on E and F, is, is that just to, to, uh, move that, uh, public hearing to the next meeting? Is that correct? Did I understand that?
Entire application. We have not opened the public hearing.
Okay, so that's, we did not open the public hearing. All right, thank you. All right.
Okay. All right, yes. Okay, we'd like to have an, a motion to continue the application. P C C dash twenty dash oh one eight Atlantis Marketing, one fifty-seven for a zone change from R two to commercial for future merge with one Colchester Avenue map oh seven A block fifty-six lot twenty-four to our next regularly scheduled meeting at the request of the applicant. Do I have a motion?
That was one fifty-seven Main Street, correct?
Yes.
In the motion? Thank you. I will.
Okay, I have a motion on the floor, seconded by Angeles. Uh, any comments or questions or discussion on this application? Hearing none. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? Passes unanimously. Application P C C dash.
Hey Ray, um, I have to hit the road for a trip up to Maine. I'm hoping you can unseat me and seat an alternate for the remainder of the meeting.
Okay, um, Angeles is unseated. Have a good trip and a safe trip.
Thank you, everybody.
Let's see. Michael, you're seated this evening.
Thank you.
Okay, application P C C dash twenty dash oh two oh Jacqueline Montanez Cologne, I hope I'm pronouncing that right, forty-six Skinner Street for a special permit to operate a car repair and used car sales business in the industrial zone. Section five point three point C map twenty block forty-eight C lot seventeen A. I see the applicant is here. Could you please unmute yourself, identify yourself, and give us your address for the record?
Hi, Jacqueline Montanez for forty-six Dynasty. Um, what I'm trying to do is, uh, auto repair shop and dealership for used cars. We're not doing a body shop, um, body work or nothing.
I'm sorry, can you repeat that? I just, the, about the body shop, I didn't hear.
We're not doing body shop, body work.
Okay, so you're not going to be doing body work?
No.
Okay. Uh, Jeremy, I know this is in, in the industrial zone, and you have a map where it is?
Uh, yeah, site plan is up on the screen currently. This is on the, uh, western side of Skinner Street as you're heading down towards Route sixteen. This is Howie Schwager's building that he got approval for a number of years ago to construct. It sits up on top of the hill.
Okay.
Does the applicant own the building or is it?
Uh, no, the applicant would be a tenant.
Okay.
And I'll, I'll also state that this is a two-story building. It's drive-in on both levels. The applicant is looking at, at leasing the first floor, which is the front half of the building, uh, not, not the second floor.
Okay, building, I mean, yeah, that building, um, I guess was approved, and we got a C O on that, probably, I don't know, how many years ago was that?
Uh, there hasn't been a C O just yet. There's some, uh, outstanding site work that needs to be done, which would have to be done before the applicant is able to move in.
So should we even be hearing this application before?
Yeah, yeah, you can hear the application. It's just a matter of what's, if, if the commission approves it, there's some, some stuff that I have to do on my end, uh, and that'll trigger the C O and some other site work and things like that that need to get wrapped up.
That's more of an in-house um, issue, I guess?
Yes, yep.
Okay, so we are essentially approving a use for an existing building?
Correct.
Okay.
How many, uh, Jeremy, I know you and I had a discussion on this. Uh, how many cars would you recommend be the maximum amount on the site?
There's not a lot of parking out in the front. I would say probably no more than eight at a time.
Thank you.
And if they're gonna be selling used cars, so the eight cars would be the max, and then they wanna have?
Yeah, that, I would think that eight, eight for sale at a time would be the max, just because there's not enough room out there. There's the, you know, the, it's not a big parking area up on top of the hill, and the hill itself is not usable.
Yeah. And, uh, does that flow, that flows through, right, to the other property?
Uh, it, it's sort of informally, yes. I don't think there's any easement there, but you can, you can drive from one to the next.
I know it has its own driveway on the other side, but I just wasn't sure how that all played out.
Right. The site plan doesn't show that there being a connection, but I think, I think ideally, the owners probably would like to have a connection point, just because it would make sense. Um, and so we might work with the owner to, to get some easements in place to make that happen.
And maybe from a safety issue, too, I don't know.
Right. Provides more access to the neighboring building.
Yeah.
Just, just a point of, of where this is, there's a, uh, an old antique power shovel on that lot. Is that the lot we're talking about?
Yes, yes, there was, and there was until shortly, uh, not too long ago, there was the, uh, the bus R V thing down at the bottom of the driveway there.
Yeah, blueberry, yeah, okay, thank you.
It's been removed, because the, the solar facility is being constructed up behind this.
Oh.
Been previously approved by this commission. Okay, uh, since this is a public hearing, if any of the members of the public wish to, uh, make a comment on this, um, please, uh, state your name and give us your comments. Jeremy, if you could unmute?
Yep, everybody, uh, that's on there can unmute themselves at this point and speak if they choose to.
Anybody from the public wish to say anything? Okay.
As far as the applicant there, uh, have you been in this business before? Is this your first time or? Can you give us a little history on, you know?
Uh, it's my first time. But I used to, uh, my husband is the one that use, do, um, mechanic stuff, and it's been for eight years. So I've been there all the time.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions, comments from?
I have a question. Uh, Jeremy, how does this, uh, type of business regulated as far as waste oil? I know it's meant, not specifically a waste oil, uh, changing service, but there'll be fluids and repairs, and, uh, how is that managed?
They will have to have a, they will have to have a waste oil tank on site, uh, and, and that will be included in their application that goes to D M V. And the location gets approved by the D M V as well, and they'll have to have a maintenance plan for emptying out the, at, at the tank at certain intervals.
It is uphill from, um, Poketah Creek, and we already got problems down there. We didn't need anymore.
Right, right, that is down the hill and across the street. You're right.
Anything else on the commission?
Uh, yes. Will the driveway for the solar farm be, be off of this driveway, or does it have another driveway somewhere?
It'll be a shared curb cut from, uh, coming in from one ninety-six, although as you can see on this site plan, the driveway up to the solar field kicks off right here, so it's, it's very, it's a very short overlap.
Okay.
It's a straight shot, pretty much, right?
Right, right, the driveway to the straight shot up, you can see my, my cursor there on the screen. The driveway for the solar field shoots right up this slope.
Okay, yep.
And as you mentioned before, Jeremy, there's, there's no, uh, certain amount of used car dealers that we are limited to in the town.
No, there's nothing in the local regulations, and there's nothing at the state level that, that limits that.
Okay, I would like to, uh, entertain a motion to close the public hearing um, for application P C C twenty dash oh two oh, uh, Jacqueline Montanez Cologne forty-six Skinner Street for a special permit to operate a car repair and used car sales business in the industrial zone. Five point three point C map twenty block forty-eight C lot seventeen A. Anybody wish to make that?
Chairman, Kevin.
Okay, I have a motion on the floor from Kevin. Do I have a second?
Second Roland.
Okay, I have a motion on the floor and second to close the public hearing. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Okay, uh, that's so moved. Uh, what I would like to do is have an, I have a motion to approve application P C C twenty dash twenty, uh, Jacqueline Montanez Cologne forty-six Skinner Street for a special permit to operate a car repair and used car. Jacqueline Montanez Cologne, 46 Skinner Street for a special permit to operate a car repair and used car sales business in the industrial zone, section 5.3. C, MAP 20, block 48C, lot 17A for the following reasons. A, it is consistent with our zoning regulations and with the following conditions, that a CO is obtained prior to start of the business, that town staff is notified prior to the start of the business, and that the maximum number of cars on this property is eight.
Just, just for clarification on a special permit, so once that special permit is in place, that carries with the land, the property?
That is correct.
Is, is that maximum of eight, is that for inventory or for all vehicles?
All vehicles.
Okay. And that, that, or that special permit, I guess, if the tenant were to move out or whatever, and then somebody else can come in front of us and change that special permit to another permit, or does it have to be a special permit specifically for used cars?
No, they, they could come in front of you and change it. I mean, if somebody came in and said, I want to do the exact same type of business, same, you know, nothing's gonna change, they would have to go to DMV to, to get their license. But they would not need to come in front of the commission to do that. But if somebody came in and said, I don't want to do used cars and repair, I want to do, you know, body shop, or I want to do, I don't know, pick something, then they would have to come.
Okay, thanks for the clarification.
Yep. I need some clarification on, on the eight cars. Eight cars would include the owner, owner's cars, the mechanic's car, or are we talking about eight cars for sale plus an owner's car, too?
Given what I have discussed with Jeremy, I was going to make it, or whoever's going to make the motion, as eight cars maximum on the property.
Okay, all right.
All right, well, Ray, you, you started out with a motion. I mean, I'll second it. Did you first, did you motion?
Make the motion?
All right, I'll second it.
Kevin? Kevin?
Yes.
I'm not making the motion. Would you like to make that motion?
Oh, sure, I'll make the motion.
Okay, I have a motion on the floor from Kevin. Do I have a second?
I'll second it, Roland.
I have a motion on the floor and second it to approve the application. Any comments, discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
I think somebody was saying something before them, before they do.
Can you read back the motion?
Okay, the motion is to approve application PCC 20 dash 20, Jacqueline Montez Cologne, 46 Skinner Street for a special permit to operate a car repair and used car sales business in the industrial zone, section 5.3. C, MAP 20, block 48C, lot 17A for the following reasons. It's consistent with our regulations and with the following conditions, that a CO is obtained prior to the start of the business, that town staff is notified prior to the start of the business, and that the maximum number of cars on this property is eight cars. I have a motion on the floor and second. Any further comments of discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? So moved. Jeremy, set five G, updates to section 3.1 Lake Pokety Prague Protection Zone.
I've got nothing new at this time. I know we've opened up this public hearing, and this has been dragging on for a little bit, for a little bit. I don't know, we don't really have much in the way of people in the attendance at this point. I don't know how you want to handle this, Ray, or the rest of the commission. If you want to just keep the public hearing open, and maybe we'll get back in person at some point, and we can move forward. It's kind of up to you.
I personally would like to continue this, because I would really like to have some more opinion input, anything from the public, which we, these Zoom meetings are very difficult to get people's opinions on this. So what I would like to do is first open it up, if anybody, members of the public would like to say anything. And then after that, I would like to continue both the hearing and the application, because it's ours, to our next regularly scheduled meeting, if that is okay with the remainder of the commission.
Is there, is there any way, I mean, this whole COVID issue, it doesn't seem like it's going away anytime soon, and this is, I don't know, it's a change in a regulation, in our regulations. Is there any way that we could just, like, drop this, so that we don't have to keep continuing, 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 and then, you know, maybe just open it up once everything gets better and everybody's back to a normal lifestyle? Because then you have to publish it, you have to publish it in the paper every time, right, that we continue?
We don't, we don't have to. It's not a requirement that we publish it, but if we're putting a legal ad for new applications in anyway, then we just kind of republish everything else that's going to be on there. We can do it that way. I just, I, you know, a lot of work has gone into this, and I'd hate for it to just sort of get dropped and not gotten back to. That's, I think, the main reason why we've kept it on the agenda.
Me personally, as a single commissioner, not as chairman.
I have, I have a point.
Go ahead, Jim.
We've had two work sessions with the public of what they want.
I think three, anyway.
Do you see anything more coming in? I, I would like to just vote it in, and and if there's any changes, let me get change it, but we'll have, at least we'll have a regulation that's a lot better than what we have right now. And there's no reason why we can't update it if something great comes in, and we said, gee, we forgot that, we put it, we'll put it in there. You know, but then we'll have it, then we won't have to keep doing it each time, you know? I think we've answered everything that the public has given us.
It's a good point. I haven't gotten any additional comments. You're right about that, and it has been noticed on the, on the legal ads the last couple of months, so it's a good point, Jim.
But Jim, there's, there's also been discussions about, you know, lakefront owners and having to do more things to their property. You know, they're already paying a ton of taxes.
That's fine, I don't see.
And then there were some other, there were bigger, there were more restrictions going forward, so I don't know that I would be in favor of that myself, personally.
Well, again, it's not retroactive. We're not going to be making anybody do something that they, you know, didn't do in the past. If you're, you know, if you're doing new construction. And a lot of it is in line with the nine-point plan, and it's in line with the Lake Smart Program that the Conservation Lake Commission has started up and done a couple of awards for already, so it's, you know, I don't think, I don't think a lot of it is, is sort of stuff that we're already recommending. It's just kind of formalizing a lot of those things.
After Jim's comments, I could go either way. Kevin, which way do you want to go?
I'm not ready to, I'm personally not ready to make a motion on this to approve it at this time. I mean, I get your points, Jim, but at the same time, I don't know, I just can't bring myself to make a motion to approve it at this point.
This is Meg. I go with Jim.
Is there something, Kevin, that you would like to change in the thing, the way it's reading?
Well, there, there was, you know, discussions about the buffer, you know, in front of, in front of the lake, and I don't know, I just, I don't know, I have some issues with that. I'd have to revisit it again. I haven't, to be honest with you, I haven't looked at the regulation in probably a month or so, maybe two months. So, I don't know, if, if there's a way, maybe, you know, if I take a look at the regulation, and then we could just, like, delete a couple paragraphs and then accept that, I would probably be in favor of that, and then, once we get more feedback, when we can get more feedback on those other issues that people were hung up on at our, at our workshop meetings. I know that some of them were hashed out, but there were still others that, I don't know, I just wasn't comfortable with, so, either way.
Any other members of the commission?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to leave this as an agenda item for one more month and, and see what happens with town council, whether they stay like we do meetings, or they have a live meeting at, at the town hall. And then, upon the recommendation of Jeremy and how all that's going, we could have something printed again in front of us and discuss it. So if we keep it one more month, and we decide that we want to shelf it until four or five months from now, I, I would be comfortable with that. I would say, leave it alive on the agenda one more month.
Would that be a reasonable compromise to everybody? We move it next month.
That's fine. I don't, yeah, I just, I just think we should be moving on this somewhat, because we don't have anything right now.
Since this is a public hearing, any members of the public wish to weigh in on that? If you could unmute everybody, Jeremy?
The lines are open, so they can unmute themselves and speak if they choose to.
Anybody? Okay, I'm not hearing anything. I would like to, I'm gonna just do it. I would like to move the, I would like to make a motion to continue the public hearing on section 3.1 Lake Pokety Prague Protections Zone Updates. Do I have a second?
Second, yeah.
Okay, I have a motion on the floor and second. Any comments of discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? I would then, that's so moved. Okay, I would like to continue the application of the updates to section 3.1 Lake Pokety Prague Protection Zone to our next regularly scheduled meeting, where we will move the question, or move the motion. Sorry, move the application. All, do I have a second on that?
I have a second, Kevin.
Okay, I have a second from Kevin. Any comments of discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye. Aye.
Aye. Any abstentions, any? Any nays? Hearing none. That passes unanimously. We're going to go to 6A, local para, which is a preliminary discussion for a modification to the building. Is, I see the applicant has been here and waiting patiently. So could you please identify yourself and give us an address for the record?
I'm Elizabeth Wiltsey. I'm the property owner at 191 East High Street, where local para is situated.
Okay, just for, just for clarification, the application, is this for a modification of the existing building, or is this for a new building?
Existing.
Okay. Between yourself and Jeremy, could you please just give us an idea of what you are trying to do on this property?
Well, we're, the main portion is, we've owned the restaurant for 20 years, and we, we need to make the rest, the kitchen larger, because our business has grown. And we've been wanting to do it for a while, and now we just, we feel this is the time to make that kitchen larger.
Okay, so what are you planning on doing?
What do we plan on doing?
You're gonna bump it out somehow? You want to bump it out?
Well, we're, this, go ahead, Tasso.
Yes, we bump, we bump it out on the backside of the building, where's the entry of the banquet room. That way, give us a room to update and modernize the two bathrooms they have on there down in the banquet room, and give us the room inside to make our kitchen a little bigger, so we can produce the food faster and more efficient.
Okay, I see it up on the screen here. Are you adding any more tables?
No.
So I've, I've got the site plan up on the screen. I also have floor plan schematics that I can show everybody when you're ready to look at those.
Okay, are you?
Gray is the existing and hashed is the proposed addition.
Okay, sorry to walk all over you, Jeremy. Are you adding or subtracting any parking?
No, the parking would stay the same.
On that backside of that parking, is there any room to expand there, or no?
Yes, yes, because one part of the building already comes out that far, and we'd be adding on to the very back of the building. And it would not come out as far as the, I don't, the, the existing part. I don't know how to explain that.
Yeah, and I, we could tell from the picture, I guess.
Okay.
It looks, we, we get the, the point there. But I was just wondering about the, the parking in the back, back there. I know you're not looking to do anything at this point, but is there a way that you can expand it if you wanted to, down the road?
We might be able to put, I don't know, in the back, back.
As our architect talk to us.
They can't see what you're doing, Tasso.
We can put one in the back corner, where exactly back there.
Okay.
And then if you come up in the front, as we coming into the restaurant, there's the empty lot, where we can put another four parking spaces, so that's my spot.
Okay, that's cool, because I think that that, you know, that would be helpful.
Very helpful.
For people that frequent there.
Yeah.
On this particular print, before we go to the inside?
I didn't hear the first part of that.
Any members of the commission have any questions on this particular print that's in front of us before we go to the inside?
Yes. A question is, any preliminary talks from Chatham Health District? Fire, fire marshal, or any of those things going to be covered in the next presentation?
Yes, the next presentation, I'm gonna have everything from the, it is, we have already the health department permit, and we do not gonna do any change in the kitchen hood or where's the intake cave, so I don't know if that we need anything from the fire marshal.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Are you looking to have a second floor in there, too, or no? Just, is that just gonna be one floor?
No, it's, where's the addition, is the second floor is coming, the stairs, so our employees, they can come up.
Okay.
I'll, I'll flip over to the building plans, so you can all see those.
And which is the addition, Jeremy?
So the addition is, is, is this area here. So this is, uh, let's see, I just want to make sure I'm in the right spot here. Right, so, lower, lower level, this is the lower level here. The existing building is the thick gray outline.
Yeah.
And then the new addition is this rectangle down here. So this is the existing banquet room.
Yeah.
Kitchen area in the, in the corner, in the back here, storage area. And then this area over here is the stairs, some additional coolers, I think, Tasso, so you get, you guys can correct me if I'm wrong as I'm going through here, but I, just using my cursor, entry to the banquet room, two new bathrooms, a small foyer area, and then into the banquet room from there.
Yes.
So that's the down, that's the lower level, and then the upper level, existing dining area, bar area, bathrooms remain. And then this is, again, the staircase coming up from downstairs, and then additional storage and refrigeration and cooling space here.
And to the right of that, that's the basement, or that's the kitchen, but there's nothing upstairs, nothing up top?
Correct. It's actually the lobby and part of the bathroom downstairs.
Okay, so if they wanted to, could they, structurally, could they add something on top of that empty space, if you will?
You'd have to ask the architect that question.
I would think that you would want to structure that, you know, that way, in case you wanted to do something, but.
No, we don't looking to put anything else on, on the second floor. We, we want only to be as a place where our wage staff, they can put their food or stuff like that, so we do not plan to put anything more on the top.
But I mean, if you wanted to in the future, you know, I don't know if structurally, you know, when you build, since you're building the, the lower level, you may want to just, well, you could put something up top if you wanted to.
This is where's the bathrooms, and then it's gonna be nothing on the top.
Okay.
Okay, any more comments or questions from the commission? I have just about everything answered for myself. I have just about everything answered for myself. Any other, anything else from the commission on that?
Yes, just one more question.
Go ahead.
Are you removing an existing staircase to build this addition or?
Yes.
Yes.
That, the, the removal of the existing staircase is where the kitchen will be expanded.
Okay.
And then moving, moving the staircase to the back.
Okay.
That was really the most economical way to expand the kitchen, I believe.
Yeah. And when do you, when are you planning to, to get this moving? Your preliminary goals on that?
As soon as we can.
Yes.
We're waiting. Yeah.
Okay.
Yep.
Okay, with that, if nobody else has any further questions, we'll go on to the old business. Thank you, and I guess we all, we're going to have, are you going to have an application within, to us within the next couple of months?
I think so.
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay, good. We look forward to seeing you.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for the preliminary. We do appreciate that.
Yes, very helpful.
Thank you for letting us to present that.
You're welcome. Okay, we're gonna move on to seven A, a 824 review, acceptance of Simon Run Phase Three Road Deer Meadow. I think we have a couple of outstanding issues on that, don't we, Jeremy?
Correct. We're waiting for as-built surveys. We're waiting for deeds to be reviewed. We're waiting for monumentation to be complete. So I'd like to push this to next month.
Okay, we don't have to do anything other than put it on the agenda next month.
Correct. Yep.
Okay, then we're going to go on to, oh, let's see, it's eight thirty. A seven C discussion, update the sign regulation to include the POR zone design standards. Jeremy, what do we have to do next month? I don't see very much on the agenda for next month.
Uh, no, it'll just be Atlantis. Yeah, that's it.
If it is all right with the commission, I would like to continue then the discussion on the sign regulation and the home-based occupations. I don't know how the rest of the commission feels about that.
I'm fine with it.
That's fine.
Fine.
I'm fine with that.
Then what we'll do is we'll move seven C and D to the our next regularly scheduled meeting, Jeremy. And then E, updates to the official East Hampton zoning map. I know we have the Atlantis that we're talking about, which is a potential zone change. That's what they're coming in front of us for. So I guess we don't really want to update the map this month.
Right, we'll wait until the Atlantis decision comes through and then, once that's done, I'll clean up the map. If anything needs to be changed, we'll get it in front of you and we'll get it approved after that.
If that's all right with the commission, we'll just move that to seven E. It's easier. Anybody object to that?
No. What was it you, thinking, what was up in the air that should, needs to be changed?
If we, if you go back to five E.
Okay, I know, all right.
Okay.
Okay.
So we'll move that to our next regularly scheduled meeting. I did promise this, anybody from the public wish to say anything? If you could unmute them, Jeremy, be happy to hear any concerns from the public at this time.
Yep, there's only, there's one, one caller left. The line is unmuted on this end. They just need to unmute themselves.
If you wish to say anything, otherwise we will move on. Okay. Plan as report.
I, I really don't have anything to report on right now. We talked about 108 Main Street. That's an ongoing thing. I don't have any major things to discuss. I think we've done a lot of discussion tonight. I think I'm good.
Okay, with that, I don't think we have any public hearings for October 7th. Is that correct, Jeremy?
I would agree. Yeah, that's correct. Yep.
We don't have to set any public hearings. So for next month, if we could be prepared to discuss Atlantis marketing, anything else that might come our way as well as the items at seven C, D, and potentially E, we'll have to see how that goes. With that, would somebody like to make a motion to adjourn?
Me, so moved.
Okay, I have a motion on the floor. I'll second it. All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you all for being here. See you next month.
Enjoy Labor Day, everyone. Thank you.
Thank you.